Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, as we've been in for the last several months. So we are in person at the Norton Public Library. To join our live video, please join using the Zoom link available on the meeting agenda on the town website. If you choose to use the Zoom app, it might participate that way. The meeting ID is 638-929-1060. There is also a dial number available if you'd like a phone only. The meeting is also available on Norton Cable Access, channel 15. So put that out of the way in terms of access. Please feel free, for future meetings, to email questions for the board to Brian Carmichael, who is my right. We do have one member of the public submitted a comment, which we'll render into the record later on. So pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote meetings in accordance with applicable law. Please note that one option for more attendance and your participation is provided as a courtesy to public board members. The meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. And after a year of that statement, I almost have it memorized. Okay, so we had a couple revisions to our agenda for this evening's meeting. But in terms of starting off with planning board business and policies, I don't believe we have anything specifically. In terms of that, a good item, we do have a pair of bills, which I will forward around, which are Verizon, and there is the, this is the reimbursement from the last meeting for 196 Mansfield Avenue, which is coming out of your review account, and a new peer review account will be funded. So pretty straightforward, but if you'd like to take a look at them, please feel free. We do not have any additional minutes to approve, so we'll skip that one and move on to the meat of our agenda. The first item here is a modification to the special permit and site plan. This is something that was on our agenda last meeting. But after the meeting, there was a discussion with Town Council and Brian that we needed to review the stamped plans to make that decision. So we just want to, none of the substantive information, I believe, has changed, but I know the applicant is here. If they'd like to come up, and we'll just review the stamped plans and proceed with this. And just to make sure all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed, we will be looking for new motions. So just hop right up here. And right around there works, I realize the podium's not there, because I was about to drag you to it, and then it's not there.
Well, there it is. I did prepare a presentation for tonight, since it's pretty much exactly what I, it is actually exactly what I presented last time, just the difference is the stamping on the drawing, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot to present anything, because I saw you here, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to say that. Brian, if you could just bring up the plans here, and then we'll look at them. So that's the inside parking. Yeah. Okay, so there's the stamped plan. There is a stamp on it. Okay, there we go. It's coming up on screen shortly. There we go.
The only difference, I would say, between this and what was presented last week is that after the architect sat down and really looked at the plans in detail, he did not believe that moving the wall over two feet to the left was necessary. These vans that he had drawn in are like, you know, similar to the Mercedes vans, the white ones. And I said last week that our vehicles will be Toyota Priuses, so these fit without a problem, and the Priuses are a lot smaller, so he didn't think moving the wall was necessary.
Okay. In any case, we're parked in the right, so be careful with the driver's door.
Yes.
Any members of the board have any specific questions regarding this agenda item? Again, we will be looking for new motions. So in three motions, just to make sure that everything is crossed and dotted, termination, that's minor modification, and then motion on the site plan and a special permit individually.
A motion to find this a minor modification to the site plan.
Seconded. Okay. Have a motion and a second, not sure if that was Laura or Bill.
That's Laura.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion that this is a minor modification to the special permit? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And now to the motions on the actual modifications.
Motion to approve special permit 13543. Seconded.
Now, just to make sure, I know we swapped those last time.
I think I got it right this time.
It sounded right.
No?
No, sorry. It's still reversed on the agenda.
Motion to approve special permit 13544.
I'll second it.
Bring it back next week, I'll get it right.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Eric for the second, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And?
Motion to approve site plan 13543.
Seconded.
Thank you, Alan and Eric, for the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry to drag you back here again.
That's okay, no worries, thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, Brian, thank you for getting these done, the review findings and conditions for two of our decisions last week. The first is Zero Hill Street. So I know we wanted to look at the conditions for that decision, just to make sure we were all on the same page. Does anybody have any questions, comments, anything specific that they would like to discuss in relation to that?
Can we pull it up and just look at it quick?
Sure. Brian, would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So let me show this here. Okay. Apparently I do not. Oh, I didn't get it down, and I didn't open the document. That's the problem. What is a technology?
Now, we are muted.
So we just did the exact.
All right, but online, just those with the microphones. Okay. So here is the, are we, are we good? Are we good? Are you all right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Just making sure that everybody can hear us. Okay, so here is the decision against Zero Hill Street. Standing findings and facts.
My only contention was, and I read through it quick, and maybe I missed it, we did say we want to see an updated landscaping plan, or update to that site plan to show the screening, didn't we speak to that? We said we could make the decisions, like, but they could add it after.
Correct.
So I didn't see that specified in the decision, or did I see them submit anything, unless I missed it?
He just mentioned the, look, first page.
Sorry, if my next, that was. I'm sorry, can you, oh, yeah. We did discuss the concerns about the buffering. So that's number eight on page, the bottom of page one, which is up here. Added vegetated buffer was added at the center to block the building. It's a question to the planning board. So that's not some, so I, you did, we did say that we would want that beefed up in a plan form, I'm not sure if we have that.
Yeah. I mean, as long as we put in the decision that, maybe before construction begins, we have an updated landscaping plan, something to matter affect, I think that's fine. Maybe verified by the building inspector, or, or planning department and building inspector, if that's the language.
Yeah, I would say it's provided to the.
Provided to the planning department and building inspector.
Yeah, that's what I would. Yeah, we're not looking to review this and render a new decision on.
Correct.
Adding trees to that buffer.
Correct, no, we just want to make sure they do what they said they would.
So they are standard conditions at the bottom of page two, and into the top of page three. We have hours of construction. And we do have hours of operation, which is in number three under post occupancy at the top of page four. So if you were looking, if we were looking to add that site plan note, that would be something that we would add potentially between. At the end of number three here, prior construction. So the applicant shall submit to these departments a construction schedule detailing the time of construction, and an updated landscaping plan featuring our quest of buffering.
Sounds good.
Does that work?
Yeah.
So let me, Brian, would you like that in tracks changes?
You want to send me that to the version?
Okay. It closed on me, so I will go back here. I can't move this. There we go. This is fun. Why is everything? So let me just make that really obvious. So there's that addition. The only other note that I think I had was in post occupancy. We talked about the hours of operation, and the owners didn't want to be not following the ruling by like sitting at his desk. So I was going, I'm not sure what, how we would feel about saying hours of full operation, if that is too great, too much of a gray area for people, or, I'm trying to stay within the spirit of, we don't want, we're not saying this is 24 hours, but we're also not saying that he can't be sitting at his desk working on a computer.
Can you say it somehow, hours of operation does not dictate building occupancy, or can't phrase it right?
No.
Or do we say that only a certain number of people, like him and an assistant, can be in there?
No, you can't limit how many people can be in the guy's office.
I'm just saying hours of business operation.
There you go.
Okay. So hours of business operation, are we comfortable with that wording?
And that'll be a loophole for him to sit at his desk.
I mean, it's not, it's not a loophole. I mean, the concern about the art operation is a two in the morning delivery of giant trucks of stainless steel, so.
Do we do something like exterior operation?
I mean, you can make a lot of noise inside, too.
Yeah. I think this covers it, it can, he can be sitting at his desk doing what he needs to do, but everything else is shared. Because there's a gray, we can't tell somebody, wouldn't they, can be in their building?
Yeah, no.
Or you can't have a cleaning company in there in the morning.
Exactly, yeah, it's kind of, yeah. Okay. So there's that. Is there, are there any other specific conditions that we wanted to review, other than those two? Did we want to put anything about direction of truck traffic? Or is the understanding that?
Too impossible.
What?
Is it impossible to?
I don't know if it is.
Yeah, I don't think it's possible.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I know we've put in a condition in other decisions, especially on Commerce Way, for other places, asking them to go, to basically go to 495, not go through residential neighborhoods.
So I had a very gray condition of most direct way to State Road, or most, most direct way to a.
Well, you know, I think that is just. What we ideally like to see is that when they come out of there, they have to make a left turn to go out to the industrial park, the number 495, so the exits can only be to the left, left turn only. Because right turn takes them downhill street to South Washington to probably out to 123.
So we want to say they would be exiting left from the building toward Miles Standish Industrial Park?
Yeah.
So I say, where possible, construction vehicles. Should case pay left, leaving the site. And there's, there's to travel toward.
If they took a right into Hill Street, though, wouldn't that pull them into the industrial park the back way as well?
Leaving the site, they're gonna.
Right, but I'm saying, okay, I see you're just emphasizing the left.
Right.
But either way, they.
The idea is to take them towards the industrial park and away from the residential streets as much as possible. It's challenging to enforce, even when we have it as a condition, because the construction companies have many different layers of subcontracting.
Yeah, I mean, the construction vehicle could be a pickup truck or a van, too, so I mean, it's.
Yeah. So in trying to provide as much buffering and help to the residents as we can, is that something I'm least comfortable with, but I've added there? Is there anything else anybody would like to add, strike, or adjust in the rest of the decision?
Mr. Chair, do we need to provide any further specificity with regards to the additional buffering we're looking for? I'm thinking specifically along the lines of, you know, non-deceduous trees or shrubs of an adequate size to provide the visual screen requested.
Non-deceduous? Apparently I spelled it right, because Microsoft isn't correcting me. Something like that, more what you're looking for along?
Yeah, I would just say so as to provide a visual screen, or to enhance the visual screen. Augment.
Okay. So that would be the updated condition there. Is there anything else that we'd like to review? So otherwise, I will save that, and I will send that to Brian to be filed, and we'll move forward. We don't need a motion on that, we just need to, to continue. I'm obviously not going to cut anybody off if anybody wants to say anything. Okay? The other decision that we had was 120 Mansfield Ave. Switch sharing to share again. Assuming accurate opening. There we go. While reviewing decisions. Is there anything on this decision that we wanted to review or discuss? I don't think we had any specific conditions tied to this, but.
We just want to confirm that track to didn't have any.
And what was, what did you find?
I found the Walgreens, which I thought had given the decision.
So are those in here? Just, are they incorporated into this decision?
I thought they were incorporated in, as a separate attachment.
I just have the two, the 120 and the, so this would, this would be the special permit and site plan decision, so there aren't conditions speaking to the drive-through in this, exactly.
And the Walgreens hadn't seen.
Okay, so there were no conditions to the Walgreens special permit. So is there anything that we wanted to discuss in regards to this decision, related to the senior center? If there's nothing anybody would like to review, go ahead and finalize this one as well. Okay? So I think that one's good to go, Brian, and I will send you the updated copy for Hill Street. Okay. The next item on our agenda is another continuation of definitive subdivision plan 13932, as well as special permit 14704 for Zero, 126, 128, and 154 Klein Street and Zero Wood Road. The applicant has asked for an additional continuance to October 18th, despite thinking they'd be ready to this evening. Brian, I think that, thank you for sharing. I understand that going back and forth with peer review can take some time, but I think that in our correspondence with the applicant, I think it might be, we would like to see them again soon. And because they've been, I don't think we've seen them in person since, has it been July?
I think so.
So I don't, I think that my preference, and if anybody feels differently, if they're asking for a continuance until the 18th, I would like to know, I would like to have their, all of what they're going to have a review on the 11th, because I assume there's a volume of information that we're going to have to review. And even if there's additional peer review comments in process, I think that we would really like to see them on the 18th, if that's at all feasible.
In addition, could you say something like, since if we're going to get a whole new set of plans and everything, we're obviously going to have a presentation, could they redline some of the things that they're changing?
Yeah.
So we're not, don't try to compare two plans, and obviously you set 11th, get it here in, at least a week in advance.
That's, that's kind of the reason. I know prior iterations of the board have asked for all materials a week in advance.
That's how I prefer.
We have not enforced that of late. I try not to be the bad guy, but, yeah, we need to see what they're going to present, and we need to see them again, just to make sure that they're not proceeding down the path that.
How's our timing for an open public meeting? Do we need any sort of extension or anything yet? Do we have a timeframe?
I mean, continue to continue the project for a special permit and a site plan, I'll think.
Indefinitely, there's no time?
Yeah, there's not a.
I don't know what I'm thinking of.
A and Rs.
Maybe something.
A and Rs, there's a prescriptive approval timeline that can come into play, but no. This is not the record, it's not close to the record.
No.
But we would like to see them, just to see what's been going on, understand what's happening, and try and move toward, I mean, trying to move towards some closure, so that.
It's not fair to the residents.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I guess. Because I think, even in the last set presentation, that they did, that we did have, even the, the plans that we did have were final at that stage, so we've never seen a, plans that were final, either the cluster plan or the quote-unquote traditional plan.
I know we had talked about it somewhere, somewhere it was brought up, we're going to be able to go over that traditional plan, so how are we gonna, as Hossley Witten reviewed that traditional plan, I guess is another question for.
That was one of my pieces of information that was forwarded by, I asked a question, Town Council's response, Brian forwarded, so how we can, how we can review that plan. So, okay. I think we've discussed this one enough for this evening.
So a motion to continue definitive plan 13932 and special permit 14704 to October 18th.
Okay, thank you, Alan, for the motion, and then Eric for the second, I think, close enough?
Close enough.
Okay, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of continuing to October the 18th, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Continue to the 18th. Okay. And the final item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for an upcoming town meeting warrant, which is a proposed amendment to zoning bylaw articles 175-22.2, which is the general requirements for all power generation installations, and 175-22.3, location setback and screening requirements. So Brian, in terms of giving us an overview of this, we will. So Brian, in terms of giving us an overview of this, we will give an overview as...
Oh, Randy, the one who had posted the idea that's here.
Oh, sure. If you'd like to just come forward and present, I guess just state your name and put it at the record and...
It's Randy Fogarty, 95 Oak Street. Basically, it's in R80, R60 zones, you can apply for a special permit to do large-scale solar. But in R40s, it's a flat, no. So I'm just trying to apply so R40 can apply for a special permit, just like R60 and R80.
Okay. And Brian, you were going to share the text of the proposed article here?
Oh.
Either way, it's something to show what we're looking at.
Yeah, the articles that are going to be changed are up.
Okay. So. Okay. And the proposed setbacks are consistent with...
Identical to R60 and R80. No different from any other residential area. Just it makes sense that anyone in R40 with a large piece of property couldn't apply for, to do large-scale solar. But people in R60 and R80 could.
Yeah, I know this bylaw has been altered a number of times in recent years. You can't speak specifically to the logic, but potentially in a more densely populated area, there might be less space necessarily between houses and maybe that's the logic there, even though the square footage is not necessarily always in regular shapes.
Right. But the property that I'm actually looking to do, all the abutting neighbors would rather see a solar field than another housing development. And it's very, for where the solar field would be, there rarely would be any houses that close.
But this is, yeah, this would go for all R40s, not just the specific property, so...
Right. Well, I'm sure there's other areas in town in R40 that have similar situations, so why shouldn't it be fair for everybody that owns property throughout the whole town? It's not saying I can't do it. It's just saying that you have the opportunity to apply for a special permit, just like everybody else in town. Which makes it fair. You know, because if there's a lot of abutters and it's going to be out by the street, then obviously it gets denied or whatever, but if it's out in the middle of the woods, it's not around anywhere. What difference does it make if it's R40, R60, or R80?
Okay.
Just even in the planning phase, that's all.
Okay.
Do we have anything where we can pull up all, you know, the GIS for the R40s so we can look at it? Although, like I said, this affects...
I actually have, the lot that I have...
Let's not talk about one lot, we have to...
Well, all of them. Basically, the only area in town that's R40 is
Charlie.
Is, yeah, pretty much, not Charlie, but over by Charlie. Basically from about Kevin Cycle to down through Old Colony, down to the other line on the right-hand side.
Mr. Chair, do we know when the, clearly this bylaw was created more recently. Do we know when?
Let's see. Not specifically. I know it's been altered a number of times in the past five years.
Right.
I know we just changed it back to where it was now three years ago.
Thank you, sir.
Because it was changed, it was changed previously to allow to be filled with an open permit. And then it was taken back because people in town didn't like it.
Sir, please, I'll call on you when we ask for comments from members of the public shortly. Thank you.
All right, I apologize. I didn't realize that.
No, that's, that's fine. Apologize for being harsh. It's a hybrid meeting, so I gotta kind of, there's no room for gray area for me to read my body language, so it's, no worries. Okay. So Brian, I know you have the GIS up here. So R40, R40 as the color coding here shows. So the dark green, this corner here is R40. So, okay, so it's, yeah, so it's north of one, or south of 123 in the Charlie area and then north of 123 in that whole corner. So it's a fairly significant swath of town. But it is focused.
And we don't know when the bylaw is implemented?
The original text of the bylaw? No, I do not. But
I guess that was my question.
The items around what was permitted in residential and in what zone was discussed, was... So this, the part that we're focusing on right now is what was changed in recent years. For, I'm the only one who was on the board when all this happened. For a short while, there was a change to allow for the, by site plan review and not special permit for a short period of time in residential. And then that was changed to, that was, large scale was allowed, I believe, in industrial and that special permit for, was put in for those residential zones. And it was, rather than doing residential en masse, the line was drawn at R60. I assume from a density perspective.
Do you know if the model zoning by the Department of Energy in Massachusetts was used?
I do not. So if you don't have anything else that you wanted to present in terms of this, I would go to see if any members of the public had any comments. I know we do have a couple. So, thank you. Mr. Henkin, I'll go to you shortly in a second. We did have one member of the public who submitted a comment prior to the meeting. Mr. Siegel, who's also here. So Brian, if you could share that on the screen and I'll just read it into the record here. So Mr. Siegel noted that he noticed the proposed zoning amendment, wanted to bring the board's attention to some of the noise concern rate in regard, potentially to the next on the solar farm project, the Rockwood Fair Road. Which is my editorializing there. The applicant for that project, for instance, reported an exhibit titled, "Noise Levels at Varied Distance From the Inverter Pad," which is attached. We can pull that up in a bit. It was noted under 310 CMR 7.101 that in the noise level policy the DEP established or the regulations that the ambient sound level measured at the property line of the facility or the nearest inhabited buildings should not be increased by more than 10 decibels weighted for the A scale in decibels due to sound from the facility during its operating hours. So that's a, just to take a break from reading, that's a state noise guideline. That's not a town and northern noise ordinance. The town of Northern does not have a noise ordinance. So continuing, the applicant for the project proposed acoustic panels providing noise transmission loss of 30 decibels. Notably with noise reduction, according to the exhibits, locating the pad within 100 meters of the abutting property line would still violate the noise regulation. In addition, the process, the project raised the issue of mosquito noise, noting major problem in the butter to another solar product had with their children not being able to play in the yard due to noise from the solar facility. Closes with a non-very specific property petition is seeking to utilize, however, while possibly capable of being addressed in larger sites, reducing this bylaw petition to include residential property of 40,000 square feet time-wide, utilizing yard setbacks applicable to larger properties, the noise issue would appear to be extremely problematic. So that is the submitted comment from Mr. Siegel. Brian, if you want to just pull up the left attachment there, we don't need to see the DEP regulations since it's but just to show that, that is, this is related to a part of the project that the board had. I don't believe you're sharing it at this time. I'm not sure if you're still sharing the old screen. There we go, it's coming. So so the idea was that this was a large inverter for a very large project. So the question of what, are all inverters the same? No. Do they all make noise? Yes. And that radiates out from the inverter. This applicant had proposed adding some acoustic paneling, kind of to make half of it enclosure around that piece of equipment to reduce the noise in the direction of homes. But as you can see, noise travels far. So I see Mr. Siegel on the meeting, so I will say thank you for submitting this and thank you for raising your comments. Is there anything further that you'd like to add to my recitation of your email or is that, did I cover it?
No, you didn't. Thank you. I'm sorry for sitting there as late as I did. I didn't, I wasn't aware of this coming up. One other thing I'd just like to add is I get concerned whenever we start going into townwide changes to address a particular need. And in this case, if you notice, the zone, the 40, the R40 zone is located in one area. My understanding was the large solar panel amendments for 80 and 60 were basically to accommodate the fact that we had a lot of two-acre zoning that really wasn't being utilized by the town because it was expensive to develop. I don't know that now, you know, using up the 40, the 40,000 square foot zoned area is probably, my sense would be the area most likely to be able to get developed in the town, the residential use going forward. And I would be a little bit reluctant to try to scope out solar paneling throughout that section, allowing it without some limitation. On the other side, what I was trying to say with the noises, basically you've got solar lots and you've got that noise, wherever you're putting the inverter, it's going to probably run into some problems. And the problem being noise, I thought we had found was a significant variable in dealing with this project. And, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Okay. And Mr. Henkin, did you want to add any further comments in relation to this bylaw? Since I know you're on the meeting and engaged with this article?
Yeah, and sorry once again for
That's fine.
speaking. I didn't realize the order of, I thought it was just, either way. So one question I have, a part of the meeting cut out for me. So is this only going to affect R40? Is that what this is going to be for? Or is this house going to work?
So the current bylaw allows for these types of solar installations by special permit in R60 and R80 already.
Yep, yep, exactly, yes.
This would expand those existing, this would basically put R40 in the same class of the, as the R60 and R80s with the same setbacks and everything else as those.
And they would still need a special permit. It won't be by right, it'll still be special permit?
That is correct.
All right, not as bad as I was worried about, but all right, I guess that's really my main question. I just didn't want it to be, in all honesty, I just didn't want it to be by right. You know, I trust people to get special permits appropriately, just in general, but I guess I'll look into it more, but that was my real question and concern. Because last time, the law was changed to do it by right as opposed to by permit and that was a major problem, so that was my concern here.
Understood. Thank you for your thoughts.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay. I do see, want to, want to ask if there's anybody else here, members of the public here in person or on the call that would like to speak, or on the Zoom call, if you want to use the reactions function in Zoom and raise your hand, quote-unquote. Or if anybody here would like to make a move towards the podium, I don't think...
Hey, I'd like to add something to that, though.
Sure, if you'd like to come up. And not that you're going to forget it, if you could just state your name and address for the record again, please?
It's Randy Fogarty, 95 Oak Street. And I'd just like to add, that's the whole idea of a special permit, it makes it a case-by-case situation. Not anyone in R40 can do it. You know, like the particular lot that I have, the abutting, a lot of the abutting lots are land conservation, preservation, sorry, land preservation. So there'll never be any houses built in there. So saying the land should be utilized for housing, well then, oh, land preservation should be given back and sold to developers because it's in R40. Same thing. So if the noise, yes, if it's close to houses, absolutely, it's going to be a problem for the neighbors. But if it's out in the middle of the woods and there's no neighbors, why shouldn't anyone have that opportunity? Because all me and all my neighbors do not want this lot developed. That's why I purchased it. We don't want another housing development. We don't want a 40B in our neighborhood. So solar is better answer than a 40B or more houses. So that's why I'm trying to do this for us. So everything would be out in the woods, so the noise wouldn't be a problem. That's the idea of, you know, not saying everyone should be able to do it, special permit, case by case. You know, just making it fair.
Thank you. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I agree with, I can see how Randy's logic got him to where he is. I 100% can see about being fair. I just don't agree with, A, any of this being in residential areas, R40 or R80. That's just my personal opinion. And we all know how special permits, it's pretty hard to not allow project with a special permit. I mean, it's very strict criteria. Without, I guess what I'm trying to say, without really modifying the teeth of the bylaw and really adding more teeth and more description into it, I just wouldn't be able to support this. I don't think it's, I think it would need more, more language modified, significantly modifying the bylaw with more specific than just setbacks and things like that. Yeah, that's just my two cents.
So this is a petitioned article, correct? So it's going before town meeting whether...
Correct. We're going, we're going to vote to support or not support in front of town meeting. I'm just giving my two cents.
Yeah?
And Mr. Chair, I think that, you know, on a smaller lot, there tends to be less trees and vegetation left on the lot, which can help to minimize some of the noise that would transmit. And on those small lots, that's just not going to be there and, and I would say I agree with Alan that I just, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to create it town-wide just the way it is at this point.
I would need a ton more info and more, we'd have to do much more of a deep dive into it, in my opinion.
I ask a question of Mr. Fogarty.
Sure.
So you said that it was land preservation that abutted this acre lot?
The acre, yeah, rounded a lot of this land preservation.
All right. So could the zoning on that change or is this forever going to be zoned in that, you know, way?
In terms of if it was all conservation land, you're saying?
Yes.
I mean, that's, I don't think that's something that we can
foresee in the future of something changing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, at the moment, it's, I mean, that would be governed by who it's being preserved by, what those agreements were, and 18 other things that are going to be site-specific.
Right.
So I think we have to view this as, it's a town-wide change.
Right.
As Mr. Fogarty said, it's asking for a special permit. One of the core conditions of finding and favoring a special permit is that the board feels the project is socially and economically beneficial. I think I may push the wording a little bit there, but it's a pretty broad finding to make. But I agree as one of the members of the public's And it's, but I agree as one of the members of the public said prior, when it was as of right, then it was, then the only thing to look at was the site plan approval. And site plan's approval, as we have gone through their conditional approvals, it's incredibly hard to deny a site plan. A special permit, the bar is much lower. But yeah, I understand everybody's thoughts and comments. Are there any additional questions or?
If I could offer, since R40 had been specifically excluded by the bylaw, I assumed it had been done for a reason. I came in sort of with the anticipation that we may not know that specific reason and the rationale behind it. But I did go seek some guidance and the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources has drafted model zoning regulations for solar energy specifically related to small, medium, and large scale. And if I could just read with regards to some of that. So pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 3, a municipality in Massachusetts may not prohibit or unreasonably regulate solar energy systems except where necessary to protect health, safety, or welfare. Although these systems must be allowed within the community, they may be regulated where necessary to protect the public. With respect to, and they have also provided model zoning for all of the various scale. And as drafted, model zoning for large scale, ground mounted, solar, they have specifically permitted it in some residential districts and restricted in other residential districts intentionally. Given that R40 has been designated as the zone by the town that will have the highest population density, we know parcel sizes are smaller, meaning the houses are closer together. It's also important to point out that other than village commercial, it is the only zone in which multifamily properties are allowed. So it is intended to be a densely populated zone. And so I, you know, without any specific rationale on the decision, I have to assume that the town had determined that disallowing large scale solar in R40 was done in the interest of public safety. And like a couple of other folks here specified, I'm disinclined to reverse that decision, especially since large scale solar can go literally anywhere else except for the village commercial center. It is now allowed in R60, R80, industrial, and commercial, which looking at the zoning map is easily 80% of the town. And I think that's sufficient.
Okay. Any additional comments or thoughts from the board? Otherwise, we would look for a motion to recommend or not recommend.
Do we need a motion to close the public hearing first or no?
Yes, we would.
So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Alan, for the motion and Bill for the second. Is there any further discussion prior to closing on the motion to close the public hearing? Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
So as we usually make recommendations for, in the affirmative bylaw.
That always makes it simpler, yes.
Correct. Approve, recommend, motion to recommend the bylaw article to town meeting. Affirmatively recommend, motion to affirmatively recommend the bylaw to town meeting.
Okay.
That's a mouthful. Seconded.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion and Bill for the second. Again, the motion is to affirmatively recommend the petitioned article to town meeting. So a yes is in favor of the petition. A no is not, is opposed. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All vote aye. And it looks like I'm a aye myself. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and are there any abstentions? Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Fogarty, so I'll still go to town meeting. We are by no means the final word here. So we look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Back up. One, one question for everybody. I'm not trying to be disrespectful or anything. I'm just kind of curious on the thoughts. If solar is so bad, why do we have them built behind the schools? And why are they putting all solar panels in the schools? If they're so noisy and dangerous and unsafe for children? I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just kind of curious what's so bad about solar.
I don't think there should be a lot of any residential, like I said, my personal.
Right, well, what about?
We're not, we're not voting on anything but schools or anything right now.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just stating, we just built a large solar field right behind the school.
Yep.
But that's the back of it. And we now are putting solar panels in all the schools.
We only look at what's in front of us, that's it.
I'm just curious on what's so bad about solar. Like I said, I'm just interested in what is so bad about solar, that's all. What the issue is.
To me, I don't think there's anything bad about it. I just think that when I looked at the sound wave, I don't think R40 can fit that without having the noise issue. And if the zoning was going to be rock solid, that that would never change. And there would never be any houses that had to deal with that. I would agree.
Well, that's why, like I said, it should be a case by case because if you look at the particular piece of property that I'm looking at, nothing would be hearing houses and it's up in the middle of the woods.
I think that's where if the bylaw was significantly changed and you had more, more teeth in the bylaw.
Well, yeah, that's the idea of a special permit, to look at everything case by case.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, if you have someone trying to put a solar field in the middle of a residential area close to houses, you wouldn't want that. You wouldn't want to look at it. You wouldn't want the noise because it's right next to everybody's windows. But if you're a quarter of a mile up in the woods, with nobody near it, what's the harm?
It's just because we're looking at the whole town and not just.
Right, you're looking at one person.
We can't look at.
Well, that's the idea of a special permit though.
If you'd like to make further comments, I ask you to please come to the podium.
Yeah, I'm just, like I said, I just had a quick question about.
Yeah, I think it's.
You know, I'm not stating that.
I think the overall kind of ideas that R40 is intended to be more dense. We understand that the lot you're looking at isn't the case. It has a lot of preservation land around it. But we have to imagine the worst case scenario in another R40 spot. And even special permits aren't foolproof.
It's, that's the idea applying for a special permit though. If you got, if it's too close, then it gets denied because of the neighbors.
Even if the denial is not ironclad, it can go, they could appeal, they could fight it, they could.
Right, but it's just, it's in some situations though, where you have a property owner that wants to do this. They can't because they were in R40, but if it was R60, they could do it with the same piece of property.
Yes.
I mean, you've got a 20 acre lot, it's out in the middle of the woods. You're not allowed to do what you want to do with it because it's designated as R40, but there's no houses around you. And if it's land preservation around you, there never will be any houses around you. So it's like, the only thing you're stuck with.
Can I make a suggestion? Say you take it to town meeting, it gets voted down.
Yep.
Next article is vote to rezone to R60. Or maybe to figure out a way to do that without spot zoning. I don't know, just to.
Well, I, that's why I was going for, just for a special permit for the area. I figured it'd be fairer for people to be able to apply for a special permit instead of rezoning one side of the street or a certain area of the street. Now you're doing spot zoning. That seems like a big.
It's tricky.
It seems like a bigger deal versus just saying by special permit. So when you take the obvious ones where, hey, this guy's going to have this right next to somebody's bedroom window, that's not fair.
And I want to say, I have nothing against what you're saying or anything. I'm saying I don't think it should be residential anywhere, my personal opinion.
And, and, and I would second that, that if, if there was an article that was going to town meeting to repeal allowing solar in R60 and R80, I would support that. Because I don't think it should be in residential either.
Yeah, well, to large scale.
Large scale shouldn't, shouldn't be either.
Yeah.
So I, I.
I mean, what is the, I mean, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not into construction, that's not my gig. What's the difference between large scale and medium? What's the scale difference? I.
It's defined by the state.
Yeah, but, yeah, but what's the definition? I might be talking about medium, I might not be talking about large, I don't know.
We, you, our bylaws refer to large scale. So we assume you're coming with it to us with a large scale.
Yeah. Yeah, it probably is, but, you know, to, to the point too is like, like you were saying, it shouldn't be in residential to a point. Like I said, if somebody was trying to put a solar field right up by the street, right around houses, absolutely not. You're going to have noise, it's going to be plain view. But if you've got 20 acres of land, a quarter of a mile or half a mile up in the woods and there's no houses around, who's it hurting? It doesn't affect, you know what I mean? It doesn't affect any of the neighbors, nobody can see it. It's out of plain sight, it's away from everybody, nobody can hear it. It's like it's not even there. And it's generating power to help lower the cost of, what did National Grid just say? 64, 64% increase in power? So.
I just tried to set out.
Exactly. So maybe if there was some solar fields that were in large parcels of property in residential areas that didn't affect people, maybe it wouldn't be as much of an increase because you've got a power plant right there.
At this point, I think I would suggest that you make this argument at town meeting.
Okay, I'm just looking for some input. I'm not trying to be snarky about it. I, like I said, my gig is towing cars. It's not construction, it's not.
And to go off on another tangent for you too, it's so hard when you're rezoning this much land. Even go to town meeting and after a meeting like this, how many people that live in an R40 own R40 would actually know their property's being rezoned?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? You'd have, that's my personal opinion for a meeting like this. Everyone that abutted in R40 zone or was in an R40 zone would have been notified.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, but.
I can guarantee 90% of the people in an R40 at town meeting, either way, wouldn't know it affected their property.
Yeah.
And it's nothing to do with you.
Right, I'm just.
I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, because I was looking for. I was looking for guidance to try to do this.
Yeah.
And of course, I couldn't find anybody with any answers.
Well, if you had a town planner, it might have been easier for you.
Right. We, we didn't have that. So I had no answers, no one to go to ask any questions. So I'm like, then I find this way, all right, apply for, to change it to a special permit. So I went with this route because it, I don't know laws.
I don't disagree with your logic and your thinking at all. I'm just saying.
Yeah, because laws never make sense on how they were.
Zero.
Never. Any, any field building, DOT laws, anything, none of it makes sense. Common sense wrote out the way. That's the way it is with everything. So I was looking at this as kind of like, all right, this is kind of the common sense way of doing it instead of doing spot zoning, from what I've heard about spot zoning. Because I figured it'd be a big deal to try to, well, hey, I want to change this to R60 because I want to do this.
I have a real trouble in my head affecting people that don't know where. You know what I'm saying? That's where I get hung up on a lot of articles like that.
Right, but like I said, the way I was looking at it is, yeah, you're absolutely right. There shouldn't be a solar field in somebody's side yard, backyard, within a certain distance. But if it's a certain distance away from all the houses, there shouldn't be any reason why they shouldn't be there either. And then, you know, the whole noise argument and everything. Well, you just built one behind a school.
When that was.
So if that's a noise problem, how a kid's supposed to concentrate? It's an elementary school and if they're that noisy and it travels that far, you shouldn't have one next to a school and that's.
That was a project that was put in when it was by right.
Yeah. Timing is everything in my opinion.
That's part of the reason why the bylaw is always now.
Right.
Just curious, when did it change back? I don't even remember.
I think three years ago.
Coming to my classroom, you'll never hear a solar panel at all. They're screaming in.
You were, you were the student.
Both. But that, that was just my whole point about it. It should be a case by case thing. Like I said, I do agree, something should be out front in somebody's face or in their backyard interrupting their life. But if it's a quarter of a mile, half a mile up in the woods away from anybody, who's it hurting? You know what I mean? But if I take this acre of land and I turn it into a 40B or a big housing development, now you're actually affecting everybody in the town because it's affecting police, fire, and schools. And all my neighbors that are bought the property, they do not want a housing development there. They flat out wanted to know when the meetings were. They want a solar field there. And they're that are buddies.
You've got some good yes votes then in town meeting.
Oh, yeah, they're all going to be there because they, they don't want the neighbors. They like their privacy and.
Well, you get 60 or 80 people there and you're probably all set.
Yeah, they, like I said, they all, when I talked to them about it, because they were concerned on who bought the property because they didn't want a development there. Because they, they like, a lot of them have setback houses. They don't want all that property developed and everything. And then when I talked to them about it, they said, hey, solar would be great. It's far enough out in the woods, it's far enough away from us. It's the perfect neighbor, you know? We won't see it, they won't have the traffic, we'll still have our privacy. That'd be great.
We'll borrow it, but I won't let one more and not bring it back.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I mean, I think, as you all said, your logic makes sense. Town meeting is the legislative body of the town.
Yeah.
Town meeting makes the rules.
Right, but I was just kind of, like I said, this whole thing has been like, the same like gig. And when I went in for guidance, there's, well, trying to find answers is, you know, not easy, so.
Yeah, we're.
I figured this was the easiest and simple route to go.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, spot zoning, well, that seems difficult. And, you know, that'd probably affect people more. Because if you change a lot of the area to R60 now, you know, it changes things on houses if somebody else wants to develop a piece of property nearby. Because now they're going to go by R60 instead of R40, so.
Yeah.
Now you're changing things for the worse for other people too, so.
Yes, that is one of the challenges with zoning articles.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to go with the fairest route, most reasonable and most fairest route. That's why I was going there.
Yeah, okay, understanding.
Good luck in town, Bo.
Yeah, hopefully it works. I mean, I just, I don't want any more neighbors than me and do my neighbors, so.
Okay. Okay. That concludes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to say to the board? Laura, close.
Motion for adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you, Laura, for the motion and Eric for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everyone. All right, on.